The call, the meeting is ordered at six o'clock. We will begin with Board Director's study session. Okay, first on the agenda. You'll have the resolution to increase the amount of that stuff about. And the public hearing on last meeting. If you look in right hand alongside, you have it in light gray as to what the old price was and what we're going to. For your hole rates, the three, what's going to three dollars was two fifty. The daily emissions punch card, you had twelve emissions for twenty-five before, now it's twelve emissions for thirty. Your party pricing, before it used to be seventy-five dollars to a hundred and twenty-five dollars, forty to eighty maximum. Where now it's broke down into lots of twenty-five, being that up to the first twenty-five is a hundred. Twenty-five, twenty-six to fifty is a hundred and fifty. All of that's in there. Monthly, for the campground, we have electric sites are going up to thirty dollars. Non-electric sites was twenty. If they pay monthly in advance, we allowed a break of it being twenty-five dollars a day on electric sites. Put in our sign program for the baseball field, which is kind of a new program because it wasn't put in there before. In our appendices, in the bottom half, we went up in the golf course appendix. We went up two dollars on all of our rates with our membership. It was reduced, but we have a two dollar trail fee. Our punch cards used to be ten rounds for three hundred dollars, now went to ten, ten rounds for three hundred and twenty. And our ten round punch cards for nine holes, well, used to be a hundred and six, a hundred and fifty, now it's a hundred and sixty. So that broke down the rates into where we're at. Questions or comments?
I guess I have a question. They've kind of, kind of retained us. What about the pool? We're getting a handicap access for this.
Yes, we're getting a lift order to get back there.
Now, is that going to, there's under fees, how's that?
No, it will be part of the admission, you know, if we can play a handicap. We can't charge them any different than a normal person. It's just there for our safety of our lifeguards and the safety of the person that wants to swim. Okay, number two. We have the 2019 budget amendment, resolution nineteen twenty, our dash twenty nineteen. With the resolution.
Speaking of budgets.
We have, we have under government fund, you see revenue sources and amounts. We have surplus in the amount of thirty-six, seven hundred and forty-eight. Okay, under the government side, the revenue side, we have an excess of thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. And under the water side, we have a excess of sixty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. Waste water fund, we're at thirty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and four cents. This is with the capital credits that are supposed to be coming from San Isabel. When we took the capital credits, we broke it down into the funds where, where they went. My percentage of what our usage for either whether it was wastewater, water, or out of administration. So that's going to be what you're voting on as the resolution to appropriate these funds. Which in some areas, I know like the administration, Bob, I know he wanted to put seven thousand of that towards the Grager for principal because seven thousand or nine thousand of that was for lot property sales. And that we had two thousand that was budgeted, but we went over by seven. So that makes up the nine and one fifty, that's seven hundred plus. It's going to show us as losses, five thousand in the administrator side for land sales. But we'll figure out how we can work out all that, we have to say, as whether it be good or not. As for the water fund side, I know there's some capital projects that we're working on between membranes, which is all part of our refinancing itself. So it's going to give us capital to restock our shelves. We have valves and stepped out hydrants, as we've been losing them. We've been limiting that of our stock, but we need to restock some of our parts and pieces. On the wastewater side, we're almost. How can I put it? Actually, we were almost in the negative because we went over budget because of valve, the valve that we replaced. And some of the work that we ended up doing down at the water, wastewater plant, in cleaning out the old room and things like that. So we were over, but we're taking care of business and putting the plants back where they're meant to be. It isn't being squandered, it's good for all, for the grid, I believe, which you said, Gary?
We're pretty out there.
Always more. Okay, any questions on that? I know we got a quote today, we're looking at new computers for office here. I know Gary needed one, not up, given things. We got a quote, it's going to be right around five thousand dollars for the computers for office, water plant, all of that. Because right now, our Windows is Windows.
Seven.
Seven.
Will not be supported after the first year.
Okay. Okay, item three. You'll have three resolutions came to order. Again, no, it really matters, but it does. You have, the first one will be adopting the budget for 2020. As you can see, there was no changes. I did not have anybody request or say anything that was wrong with what I presented at the budget hearing. I felt that everybody's comfortable with it after reviewing it, so I went ahead forward. There's been no changes to it, we're good with it. The next resolution that will be set would be to set the mill levy, which would be twenty-one, twenty nineteen. Yeah, if you would go through it, the balance for the budget for general operating purposes for property tax revenue is four hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and four dollars and ten cents. The total valuation from the assessor was twenty-three million, six hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars. Mill levy will still stay the same at seventeen point nine six seven, which there has been no increase or decrease there. Okay, questions?
Yes, I have a question, and I ask, how long we came back to take?
I called the assessor's office today, and the only person that can answer, I let the voicemail for. And they have not returned the call by the time this meeting. So I can, when I get that information, I can send it out, but I'm just waiting on her to return my call.
Most likely though.
I guess the reason I'm asking is that it says there's a temporary one, filled by zero, 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 zero mills on the section two. If we were going to adjust the mill levy, that's what it would be.
Yeah, it's on line two. Well, oh, the mill levy?
Yeah, program two, the section two. Because.
Or what you mean, plug in the actual numbers, you just got zero.
Is that one of the?
I don't know how to pay that.
No, because that's, because that's on bonds and interest. That isn't on, on you if you had to pay that. So that's why it's zero. And so we're not adjusting the mill levy to pay back the.
No, we were just over by the six thousand, seven hundred dollars.
No, it's just a temporary tax credit. So it won't impact the mill levy.
Which in that number up above, the seven, four hundred and seventeen, that was the tax credit came. If you added that in, that's what we would actually get. So actually, what we had was a four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar assessment or tax revenue. It was taken out of that, and that's why we just left that for four seventy. Which you look at for our tax. Okay. Next, you have resolution twenty-two dash twenty nineteen. This is resolution appropriate sums of the money as we stated in the budget. So if you look, there was a couple items, columns added within this and compared to last year. You have depreciation in there, which shows where we added the appreciation to our funds as sewer, water, golf course, parks, and admin. And we're going to put fifty-three thousand in savings for depreciation. We also had capital outlays. Some of that we ended up increasing, didn't we, Yvonne? Or was that in the?
Yeah, that's just, it's.
That's what we have last year, that's what we're putting in for this company.
Under our capital improvement fund. That is what we're putting away in this budget this year, and we put some last year.
That's per our resolution last year, correct? Yes, okay. So that's basically all of that, that needs to be approved, budgetized. Questions, concerns? Okay, number four, road resolution. We have someone that would like to have a road put in expedited. If you look at the back of the resolution, I just copied it. If you look up on top, this is Cherry, it's right off of Crow Cut Off here. Jefferson and Crow Cut Off, it's the first road to, you're right as you get on Jefferson, you go to get onto that house. He's building two houses in there. He's looking at a five hundred foot expedited road in there.
So who owns the road to the house that's already there?
So that was the problem, the research that we found at this point is nobody claims the road. So it determines.
It's ours.
Yeah, the plan says before, that particular street, I've seen this. When I was in real estate business, nobody would actually identify yet who's been plowing it and maintaining it. So I've seen that done.
I've seen, I, I know me personally, I, in my rounds, you know, through the years, when there was a big heavy snow, I would venture down there just as a courtesy. I've seen the county do that a time or two, but at this point in time, conversations with Public County Road Bridges, it's not on theirs. And according to our map, our resolution of roads, it isn't on ours, Stephen. That's why this is being put in because.
And I agree that it's not on the list, because I've looked at this as one other one in town as well.
There's an house back there right now.
Yeah.
And I saw when the other two up in the building, back toward that house.
And supposedly, you can't get a building permit until you have an access permit. So I'm wondering who signed the access permit.
So, well, that, that's part I don't know, that, that we'd have to do more research. I'm not sure when that house was built, twenty-two thousand?
Yeah, it's been there since before I was here.
Yeah, I want to say early two thousands.
The reservation of Pueblo County was dated in ninety-seven.
Why it wasn't put on there, I don't know. Before my.
It was, it was planned.
Well, the thing is, all I'm getting at is, I don't want the board to accept a road that's already accepted by Pueblo County.
It is. I verified that with Public County Regional. It is not, it is not on the list. In order for the access permit to be granted, they have to have applied through us. Basically, our application is sufficient for public or regional billing to sign off or have us sign off on routing for the access.
Last time I checked, all access permits had to be issued by roads and bridges.
But it, it's in our, they're going to. They're going to, they are, it's like we do a will serve letter for water. We're basically doing a will serve letter for the, for a part of that, to me, that regional requires me to have the road approved through resolution by the board as, as an official act of accepting a road. Before they'll sign off on the access.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, next, we have number five. After, I just got it, got it in, I put it, just put it in your books. Carolyn sent me after she had contacted the lawyer for Rye. At this point in time, we'd like to put this forward to the next meeting as hopefully by then they will get their issues that they need finished, which is basically a right of way before we can accept it and close the court case. So that is why I'd like to take it off the agenda. Because at this point, right now, that's all we're waiting on. We've got the meter in, we've got everything else access inaccessible to us. We're just waiting for that right of way. Number six is, under our pension plan that we paid last year, there was a change to the fees. It actually went down. It was at one point seven five. They are dropping it down to one point two five for the four fifty-seven for their annual fee. And also, it was not put in there, the advisory fee, which was fifty basis points. But that was already there, but it was now taken contract. So we're trying to clean up that contract right now. So we just need board approval to have me sign, me and Yvonne sign for, for that as we are the trustees for the. So you said the fee is going down? Yes, it was at one point seven five. They, I recalculated for what we're putting into it and stuff. They gave us the bad deal of one point two one. Okay? Any other questions on that? There was, the, I have one more thing to add to the workshop. I know we've been talking about refinancing and getting offers and the board okayed us to look to see if we can find anything. We finally got an offer this afternoon that suits our needs and us going forward with the finance, refinancing. You look, you should have it in section ten, right front. What we're looking at is pay during the bonds and keeping the loan separate out of it. The bank has agreed to be a.
Subordinate.
Subordinate holder to our note, which would be for the bonds. We get CRW with CRWD would be on the loan side. We wanted to separate them, keep the loan out of the bonds with this, because we only have four more years left on the loan side, which we paid a hundred and ten thousand to, it goes up to a hundred and seventeen thousand for the next four years, which we have money in escrow for the last year of it. So we actually, it would be three years that we have left on the loan. So that way, we can pay off the loan, get it out. Whereas the fund, we can't pay them already, but yeah, we can do this. So they're looking at taking the bond, bond, the O B O of the two point six, and loaning us another nine hundred thousand for our capital, for our plants, our meters, our improvements that we need to get done. They're willing to take the payment for the first four years and keep it at a lower rate of charging us two hundred and thirty, which gets us within our three hundred that we can afford for the first five years. Because after the fourth year, that loan comes away, so then it will raise up to the, I mean, unification schedule is with this. But with this, if you look after the fifth year on it, the payment goes from actually two hundred dollars a year to two sixty-five, which within these four years, we're losing the F A M press payment, which is right at almost a hundred thousand a year. And we will also be losing that loan payment. So by it going up to sixty, two sixty-five, we're still fifty thousand again. And we can buy this back after ten years. Hopefully, we can take our profits from what we're normally paying, put it in the bank, and at ten years, pay off the whole thing. Which depending upon whatever. With this, I'd like to inform you that we need filters in the flat. Flat went down today, we were down to one skid. Talked to the cobra, everything. He says, this is what happened, is you are at the end of your filters. The bill on it right now, with the filters, a heater, and the tech to come down is going to be. One third, one hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars. That's a hundred and twenty-five thousand for the, the filters and about seven thousand for the heaters. Because he says that's one of the main problems too, is you're not getting your filters cleaned enough because your filter, your heaters are gone. You've got to get that water temperature up so that it will help, help clean your, your. So we're, we need to order them now, because hopefully, we can get them in, or we can get them in and get our flat up and running. We've talked to him, if, like I said, we're on the last phases of getting our refinancing together. If I could get the board to go forward with, let us go forward with the refinancing. If you give us a sixty day net payout, we can order them now, they'll accept the pay in February fourth. And that way, we can get our flats going and up and running to be efficient. This is part of all of that package out I presented to you guys with the meters, the flat, reconditioning, all of that back in September, August, when we first started about all of this, about one night. And then we started hitting all those things, so.
He's a new skid, I mean, you have three skids, right?
Yeah.
And so this would be part of that whole renovation, you can back up to.
Yes. This would be the most important piece of that overhaul.
Because you're down to one skid right now.
Yeah, we were. Skid and a half. We're, yeah, skid and a half. We got two skids running at capacity of a skid and a half. And it boils down to the membranes are, they're out there, we can't clean them anymore, that doesn't work. All the things that we've been trying to bandage along or prolong our time where we can get the financing in place, that time has kind of come to an end, but the plant just won't let us prolong itself anymore. It's, it's in pretty rough shape. And this would be, this would be, essentially, you have a motor that is lost compression. You push on the gas, it goes faster, but it's only going to be so much.
And with this, it's creating a lot of other issues within that skid. It's creating a timing issue because it isn't allowing it to drink quick enough, all of that. And so it sets off the timing, which then starts messing with valves and evaporated pumps. And we've got pumps running hot now, and it's become very. Inefficient.
Become more expensive along the way.
You know, I think every board member agrees, we've got to have water and water in the plant. But for me, to add on a million dollars for a shopping spree doesn't cut it. And that's been my opinion all along. I'm not the only vote up here, it may go one way or the other. But in my opinion is, we've got to cut back somewhere. And to just go on a million dollar shopping spree doesn't cut.
This isn't a shopping spree. This is, this is maintenance that should have been, this is, hold on, this is maintenance that should have been done for the last fifteen, twenty years. Money should have been put away for these.
Absolutely.
Well, you're at the end of the line right now.
Yes.
You know, you don't want the metro district here, you're out of the water business. I'll tell you what, you will be out of the water business in a week.
I think I just said we need more.
I know, and I understand that. But what I'm saying, when you say it's a shopping spree, it is.
But they haven't asked for the other stuff yet, I mean, they're going to.
That's where they're rolling in the extra money.
Well, but you don't have to borrow the money. You don't have to have the money until you want those things. But I look at the, I look at the things today again, and we're still producing a lot more water than what we're getting built for. And I think there's a problem there somewhere, and it's, and I think the meters will really help. But I think we do line item by line item and buy as we need things. At least we have the money there that we borrow from to get those things done. So I think in another two weeks, we could be without water in this place. I mean.
It isn't like we're going to take that nine hundred and just go out and run. You have, it's got to be something.
That nine hundred number's been creeping up.
No, it's been always nine hundred. It's been one nine hundred since September, and this was on the essentials. This was meters, this was.
Meters aren't essential. That's part of what you want to do, they're not essential.
I think it's an essential, it's an essential part of our process.
You want to do them for efficiency. They're not essential, they're working.
But some of them are.
And that's fine, I understand that. All I'm saying is, we've got other issues financially that we have to look at. And I think we, yes, we need the skids up, yes, we need the hundred and fifty grand. I see no problem at all with this four time fine, that hundred and fifty grand. What I have a problem with is the nine hundred, not the hundred and fifty. That plant has to operate. That's all I'm saying in this, discussion. So all it was is discussion.
Let's question, to tie into that, just because we have nine hundred thousand dollars, we don't have to borrow nine hundred thousand dollars. We can, we can come to this, we can have some discussion, borrow what we need, what we need for.
I would have, I would be more open to that, but he wanted to borrow nine hundred immediately.
The thing is, is we have the opportunity to borrow that nine hundred as working capital. If you want to put that working capital aside to say, okay, now with that nine hundred thousand, it's got to come through board approval to buy the meters. got to come through board approval to buy the meters out of that 900. Okay, if we need something out of that 900, we can do that. But I don't want to have to go in, okay, we borrowed this, now I've got to go find another note someplace else because something else has come by. And I got to go, go borrow money again from somebody else. This gives us the opportunity. Do you have that working capital? Yeah, you guys can have the say-so where it goes. I have no problem with that. But I'm doing it as looking as what is needed, what I feel is needed within the district to get it up and maintain, you know, the other. As Bob says, this whole question, we need to, we need to put money. So we need to spend it. Whatever it takes, right now, immediately, we need to get the money and spend it on that plant. Uh, the remaining, with the 700,000, is kind of supposition as far as how it's going forward. Can we get a commitment for 900,000 and not spend it? Can we get a line of credit for 900,000 and not have it as a loan?
I don't know if that violates our current bond, bond debt components.
We shouldn't be borrowing 900,000 and have it just sitting.
No, it needs to be sitting there. Like I said, there's other projects that need to be done within that 900,000.
Can we not utilize the entire loan? And can we work it as a line credit?
We can't, we can't get any loans with the current structure of bonds. It, it is a violation of our bond components to get a loan right now.
Can we get that money and then invest and put it in a C-Bings or something, or, or something where we can pull some of it out when we need it? Or we're making money on it? Because the interest rate is what, 3.?
3.9.
3.39.
Absolutely. We're making money, we're spending less in interest. You can't get 3.39.
No, but now we're getting, making, what is it, 2.2? Do we have to actually?
Oh, no, it's down to like 2 something, maybe 2.2.
Yeah. But do we have to actually seize the 900,000 loan?
Yes.
Rather than have it as a line credit? Otherwise, you're violating the laws. I, I don't understand that. I don't either.
It's, I mean, basically the bond.
The commitment is the exact number.
We need a commitment. Can we get a commitment for 900,000 but not utilize it?
I guess we'd have to check into that, but if it's considered a loan, then we cannot.
Because you're, you're going through bonds again. It's taking the bonds and there's buying bonds to cover the 900,000. So it's all within the bond process.
I think we.
Loan is the wrong word. Yeah. I think as far as actually utilizing 900,000 for infrastructure and improvements and within the valley.
That's what it is.
We're going to, we need that. Though I don't know that we, we don't want.
As Bob eloquently puts it, is a shopping spree. I've got probably $2 million of projects that need somehow be done in the next, in the next, you know, three to five years. The list that we've compiled at this point that encompasses the 900,000 is, those are what we consider the priority items. Now, there may be a, a discussion needs to be had, or, or there are differences in those priorities, but I think, you know, Jim and I and, and, you know, consulting Gary and some, and other people in here, we're all pretty in line with what we feel is the top five things, which this would take care of. But one of those items is a three-year phased program for the meters. One, the item we're currently working on with the reclamation side of the plant, which hopefully, as, as Bob and I were discussing earlier, is, is there's some savings that's not necessarily monetary. It could be just source water savings, whether that's through, you know, offsetting water that's, you can put back, we can't directly put it all back in the lake, but we're using it to offset water that's pooled from them. So there, there's a lot of different things moving parts in it, but at the end of the day, this is going to get us out of the Band-Aid program.
Any question that we recognize, that we could spend 900,000, there's no question whatsoever. As far as the process, and I think maybe the, the timeline of doing that, is we're looking at three years, five years, whatever. If, if it's five years for a program that you have in these plants, that means if we're going, going to be having 900,000 loan for four years, we're not using it, we're paying rent and window stuff. So as we go through this, can we have that money so it's not just, we're not paying interest but we don't need it?
The way that the bonds and everything are structured, that's the answer, you know? That's what I, my question is.
So two questions. Number one, if we said, no, you can't do this, oh, how, just a minute, how long would it take you to get enough money to keep water flowing? I think that's an important point to remember. And the second question is, did I hear in the discussion that restructuring in this way, when year five hits and we have to pay a bigger principal payment, we will have paid off 50,000 more than we will be paying tomorrow?
Yes.
Any other comments?
The other thing I think is, is by doing that thing with the sewer system and rerouting that water back into the lake, into the lake or wherever we put it, we're saving our sewer system from capacity. Because if we don't divert that water, then we're going to start flooding into the pond in about another year or two if all the houses are being built, that our sewer plant won't be big enough.
Bob, Bob brought this in today. He asked me about it. Well, I know we're putting it into the pond, but it should be reciprocated back to the land. Well, within this process, we can't do that. We've got to do the first step first, which is putting it into the pond, right Gary?
We want to go straight to the pond always. There's, there's so much paperwork and bureaucracy going back and forth, it's not worth the effort to do it.
And if we, but if, but if we want to, but if we do that, and that would be the next step, if we want to put it back into the lake, say for winter time, when we aren't using the pond, and it's going to get to the point, it's going to be full, we might end up having to do that and say, okay, let's go through the paperwork to get it to where it can be at.
You're looking at a smaller percentage there that, that we're still going to have to put somewhere.
Yeah.
Either to the sewer, the west course, wherever, you're not going to be able to take all of that that's, that's backwash matured.
I'm sorry, Gary, what are you doing?
Yeah, you might have, you might be able to get $10,000 a day.
Any other comments?
Yeah, a couple of things. You're obviously going to need money and, if we have $2 million of the projects that are needed over the next three or four years, I would like to see an operational report that shows what those projects are, what their costs are going to be, the timelines on those things, rather than just some rhetoric about what needs to be done. And that's put out to the people in the public so they can see what is needed within the metro district for them to continue their water sewer services and things they like. The other thing was the statistical knowledge on the meters, I still can't buy. You tested six meters and you only had one was off, and your overall usage was right on the number. So I can't go along with the meters being the reason that you're producing more than your, than your, your billing board.
How would you account for it then?
That's your dog. I don't know. You, you're, I'm going by your statistics. You took six meters, you tested those six meters. You take those six meters, they, one was out under, one was over, but when you take the total of it, they were right on the money. They were within statistical, and first of all, six meters is not a big enough sample to come up with a conclusion.
I know, I know six meters that's done, that's changed within the last two weeks, that we're not reading at all.
I, I'm not just statistically, not to give you rhetoric, it don't have to be real fast. The meters weren't, you say they weren't reading, the statis, the meters, the statistic. And six months ago, I suggested maybe we ought to get into more investigation into those meters. That hasn't, I don't see where that, any of that's been done.
So a part of that comes down to the cost. Right now, I don't have the, one, I don't have the money or the manpower to go pull 200 meters out, to do what statistically you would feel would you be more comfortable with. Bens testing and whatever, you're figuring about $200 a meter to have a bens. So you progress that out to, you want to do 200 meters, you want to do a hundred meters? What do you, what do you feel is accurate?
So, let me give you an analogy, that's like some of the doctors, they have all the money for MRI, fully have the over. I don't see it here.
See, I think the big problem is, we're just producing so much water and we're not filling, that's, they're too far apart. And somehow we've got to get those where they're, I mean, because the water, just one, we're just running, our water plant, just running our engines too much.
I agree with you, but I think you need more investigation. This is a very old system.
Okay, last comment, and then I'll close on this.
Harry, we agreed, oh, there's a loss of water. But they can't even come up with where it is. It, it's a massive loss. So we know it's not the meters. There may be some loss there. I understand the depreciated meters, that's one thing. But one of the concerns I've gotten, it's just changed again, is when we talked last week about getting the permit and everything, we're ready to go in six months. Now what money you want to apply to put that water in the pond? Why are we talking about money to put that water over there? What money? That was a preview last time, pretty much.
No, no, no.
No, he's never been.
So how much money you talking about to say right three minutes?
18,000. Between 18,000 and $1,000.
That's a long ways from 900,000.
No, no, it was 18 to begin with.
That's fine. 18,000 is not out of line for what needs to be done.
For the paper.
And the 150,000 needed to get skids up is not an issue. We're still under 200,000. We're a long ways from that 900. That's why I say it's a shopping spree.
You have, you have.
I want to see in the.
300,000, that, just in a meter, that's part, that is part of that. You have the, what we went over in the sewer plant, or cleaning the pond and stuff that we were.
And we still have to track that up. So there was another 60 to 75,000 that needs to be spent because the DA's going to come out, everything you can't store it on site. So the, the shopping spree is not an accurate.
Maybe we shouldn't have done that until we had the money to do it.
Then you can, you, we didn't have an option, the state was mandated and we had to do that, or we're going to lose.
Are you going to get a non-compliance order?
We were already a non-compliance down there.
Huh?
We're already a non-compliant.
Yes, and that's why, that's likely part of that.
There's multiple ways to get non-compliant, so you don't want to keep compelling them.
This is something that they kind of been kicked down the road to.
Hey, is anyone who hasn't had an opportunity to make a comment, anything they want to say? If not, I am closing the study session.
I will immediately hang up this.